Pledge of prayer, please.
During God be thinking for this day and time, we feel the talented business, blessed with leading guidance and decisions that we make, that be the best interest of the town. We have to be with our citizens, be with the ones who are sick and ill, and continue to be with our troops and keep them safe. We actually sing in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Want to welcome everybody to our last meeting in October of 25. I do want to say the pledge of stability. We will be respectful of one another even when we disagree. We will direct all comments to the issues. We will avoid personal attacks. Item number one is a proclamation. The mayor and council proclaim October 2025 as Emily Atkins' blood clot awareness month. Before, before I do that, I want to thank Atkins and her team because we had the mock election over at elementary school yesterday. And I know you're going to be gone whenever, not long after yours is done, but I wanted to acknowledge you and your office for what y'all did. You know, I wish I could have been there. Maybe next year I get a little bit more advanced notice of it, but thank you for what you did and your office did for that. But now I want to read the proclamation. Whereas the nonprofit Emily's Promise works with medical professionals and the public to educate Floridians about the life-threatening risk associated with blood clots. And whereas October is a significant month as Emily Atkins, the namesake of Emily's Promise, passed away October 21st, 2022, from pulmonary embolism caused by a preventable blood clot. And whereas Emily Atkins was a rising star in Nassau County healthcare, a dedicated community volunteer, and a proud graduate of Fernandina Beach High School and the University of North Florida. And whereas according to the National Blood Clot Alliance, an estimated 900,000 Americans are affected by blood clots each year, with 100,000 lives lost to this preventable condition annually. And whereas the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention reports that blood clots can strike anyone at any age, with risk factors including surgery, pregnancy, and cancer treatment, killing more Americans than car accidents, AIDS, and breast cancer combined. And whereas advocacy efforts by Emily's Promise led to the enactment of the Emily Atkins Family Protection Act in Florida, which now requires hospitals and certain healthcare facilities to screen patients for blood clot risk, train staff to recognize warning signs, and report cases to a statewide registry, marking the first law of its kind in the nation. And whereas Emily's Promise continues its mission to raise public awareness, promote the use of Caprini Risk Score to assess individual blood clot risk, encourage the creation of blood clot prevention plans with healthcare providers, and advocate for lifesaving treatments for those at risk. And whereas recognizing emergency medical advancements such as medical thrombectomy can lead to improved direction or detection and removal of blood clots, ultimately saving more lives. And now therefore I, John P. Beasley, Mayor of the Town of Halyard, do hereby proclaim October 2025 as Emily Atkins' Blood Clot Awareness Month, and urge healthcare professionals, leaders in the Town of Halyard, Nassau County, Florida, and the public to dedicate their efforts to spreading awareness, educating on prevention, and recognizing the serious threat blood clots pose to lives across Halyard and beyond. And I do have a proclamation if you want to accept it, Mr. Atkins and Ms. Atkins, both of you. And I know that after we do this, we've got a short video, a commercial that y'all ran, and then we'll let y'all say whatever we need to. Oh, you're going to take the picture while you're standing here? Oh, you're going to, oh, thank you so much. Now, if you would, can I have a special video?
Hey, Mom, it's Emily. I just wanted to tell you that I love you, and I missed you today.
We lost our daughter to a blood clot when she was 23, just eight days after Mayo Clinic removed her cast.
Because of the Emily Atkins Family Protection Act, Florida hospitals must now screen patients for blood clot risks and follow new prevention protocols.
Staff will be trained to recognize the warning signs and act quickly.
Learn how this law protects Florida families, including yours.
Thank you so much. Janet Atkins, 863 Laguna Drive, from Dina Beach, Florida. We just want to say thank you so much for your leadership on this issue. You know, as we traveled to Tallahassee to get the passage of this bill during this last legislative session, I think what really touched our hearts is that after every committee, when we testified, somebody chased us out of that committee room to share with us their blood clot story. We had no idea when we started on this journey that so many Floridians, so many Americans, are touched by blood clots. And we certainly had no idea that blood clots were killing young people. Emily was only 23 years old. She simply fractured her ankle. She fractured her ankle. In eight days after Mayo Clinic removed the cast, she died. Eight days after the cast was removed at Mayo Clinic. And so what you're doing here tonight is meaningful. We appreciate your leadership. It's important that people be aware of the signs and symptoms of blood clots, and that they ask their doctor if they're having surgery, what's my blood clot prevention plan? What we've learned in this process is that 90 days after surgery, you're at risk of developing a blood clot. Oftentimes, we think it's six weeks, or six weeks past surgery, but it's actually 90 days is what the doctors tell us, that she could be at risk of developing a blood clot. And they kill, and they kill very quickly. And so thank you for what you're doing here today.
Mr. Mayor, we're very grateful to you and the council for taking the step of being a patriot. So patriot, if you think about it, is somebody that defends freedom and liberty. A patriot stands up when you need to stand up, when that's the right thing to do. And so acting, taking action, doing something is very important. I think probably what really sort of stunned Janet and myself, I guess, you know, when you lose a child, your life is completely shattered. Probably that's the singular word to describe how people who've lost a child feel. So, you know, from our perspective, Florida has acted. It's an incredibly proud moment for this state to watch 51 co-sponsors come together. You know, the unanimous support from Senate and the House, the governor signed the bill. This is the first in the nation. This is no longer a suggestion to do blood clot screenings in hospitals with emergency rooms. This is not sort of a, well, I hope it works out kind of thing. No, this is now Florida law. This is a requirement. So when your family goes, and if there's a blood clot history, they're going to be identified, they're going to be stratified, they're going to be treated in the most appropriate way possible. And so our hope is, is that that's going to help prevent other people from looking at an empty chair at their kitchen table, because that's what we look at every day. And so from my perspective, one of the things that occurred to me was, well, Florida has acted. You know, this council has acted. And so what we now need is the Joint Commission on Healthcare Accreditation to act. They have it in their power to essentially put it into their standards across this nation for every hospital that they provide accreditation to, saying, you know, this is something that everybody ought to be doing. This makes a lot of sense. This is common sense. Florida has acted. How about if we act? We're also going to go talk to CMS, Dr. Oz, and the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid. They have contracts with the Medicare Advantage Plans. Well, I can tell you, when the Medicare Advantage Plans have it in their contract, that all the hospitals that they contract within their network are going to have to do these screenings, guess what's going to happen? Every one of those hospitals is going to do exactly that. So, you know, from my perspective, you know, Florida has taken the lead. Florida is leading in the most comprehensive way you can imagine. So you should be proud to be a citizen of the state of Florida. You should be proud to be a citizen of the Town of Halyard, because this is where the patriots are. These are the people who have acted to defend your life and defend your liberty. You can't have liberty without life. And so from my perspective, I'm very grateful for people who act and stand up and do something when this country and its citizens are faced with the catastrophic consequences of things such as blood clots. And so I just want to express our appreciation. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for reading the proclamation into the record.
Yeah, and I do want to say that Doug practices what he preaches, because it was a year ago that I was about to have foot surgery. And you pulled me off to the side and said, make sure you talk to your doctor, make sure they have a blood clot strategy in place. So, you know, thank you for that.
Well, we've had many, many conversations, and we've sent many, many people to interventional radiologists. And we've had lots of conversations. Our concern and focus is Nassau County and also in Florida. So you're going to see this commercial playing all throughout the month. It's going to be on Fox 30 every morning, so with your coffee. And what we're trying to do is make sure that other people know, this is now a new law. So all the CNAs and your nursing homes are going to be trained on identification of people with blood clot risks, as well as how to respond. 80% of these knee replacement surgeries and hip replacement surgeries are resulting in blood clots. Remember, the leading killer of cancer patients secondary to the cancer is a blood clot. People who have been, who are pregnant, who have delivered a baby 12 weeks after delivery, leading cause of death, a blood clot. And so when you're over 60, your risk factors go up by a hundredfold. And so the problem is, is a lot of people aren't being told this. And so at the end of the day, part of our mission as a foundation is to try to make sure this information gets out there, it becomes common knowledge, not sort of hidden knowledge, because the more that people, particularly here in Nassau County, know what to do and know to simply get those words out, what's my blood clot prevention plan, and then let your medical provider answer that question, it will absolutely change the course of your care. And so we hope you'll remember to get those words out when you know somebody's going in for a surgery, because all these deaths are happening 90 days after surgery, all of them. And so we just want to thank you and the council members for your kind attention and your leadership, but most importantly, for being a patriot and acting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We know you don't have to stay. So, yes, ma'am. And thank you again for your office for doing that, the mock election. If you could be here next Thursday night, we're going to have the council meeting.
The mock council meeting.
The mock council meeting for all the kids that were elected for seven o'clock. Okay.
Did you get your flash scrub?
All right. Item number two, do we have any additions or deletions? Do we need to add that one?
Yes, I have a payable that slipped through. It's a payable to CPH Engineering. It's for manhole 167 and 170 repair. It's for the engineering on that.
All those in favor? Oppose? All right. Item number three, town council to consider ordinance number 2025-08, an ordinance regulating the water and sewer usage rate. Okay, ordinance number 2025-08, and ordinance of the town council of the Town of Halyard, Florida, a municipal corporation, regulating the water and sewer usage rates in accordance with the Town Charter, Section 4.11, Paragraph 5, action requiring an ordinance and further stated in Chapter 58 Utilities of the Town Code and providing for an effective date. And this is the first reading?
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve ordinance number 2025-08 on first reading.
Second. All those in favor? Oppose? Item number four, town council to consider ordinance number 2025-11. It is, yeah. Okay, so let me do this then. It is an ordinance approving the confirmation of reservation of plant capacity and cost recovery agreement between the Town of Halyard and Sherry Downs, and providing for non-codification and an effective date. This is the first reading. Do we have any, you have anything you want to say on this one, or?
No, sir. It's first reading, and it's, we'll set it for public hearing and final reading November 6.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor? Oppose? All right. Item number five, town council to consider ordinance number 2025-12. That is an ordinance of the Town of Halyard, Nassau County, Florida, amending Chapter 1 and 30 of the Town Code to reflect the Code Enforcement Special Magistrate providing for conflict, separability, administrative correction, and scrivener's error publication and effective date. And this is on the?
First reading.
On the first reading.
And set public hearing and final reading for November 6 also. And this was the ordinance that's going to assist us in amending our supplement, our Town Code, to amend it from going from Code Enforcement Board to Code Enforcement Special Magistry as the county switched that. And this is to follow the interlocal agreement with them.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor? Oppose? All right. Item number six, town council review, discussion, and decision regarding the formal request for proposals for municipal licensed water and wastewater plant operator services received on October 2, 2025, and publicly reviewed on October 9, 2025.
You all had asked me to put this on tonight's agenda from the workshop on the 9th, because of the inconsistencies that we had in the advertisement for a decision to be made on if we want to move forward with looking at the two that we received, or if we felt like we needed to reject and re-advertise based on that. Because we did receive phone calls in regards to.
I personally feel like the way that was written, it was, you know, I just, it was wrong for sure. So I think it has to be sent back out.
I agree.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
All those in favor? Oppose? Item number seven, town council to accept the resignation of Elise Ernest, Administrative Assistant, effective October 2, 2025. All those in favor? Oppose? Item number eight, town council to accept the resignation of Jennifer Cohen, Administrative Assistant, effective October 8, 2025. All those in favor? Oppose? Item number nine, town council consideration and approval of the town clerk's recommendation to fill town hall vacancies with Myra Cockerham in a temporary part-time position.
I don't know if you want me to speak on that, but that's very part-time, month-to-month. She's willing to come in and help us with training, assisting with whatever needs assisting with, because she knows all three jobs up front, and also with the records management.
Do you know about how many hours a week?
No, but it will be very part-time. I do know that. And it's, she's asked, not Fridays, and she's asked month to month, because she doesn't, of course, want work no more than we need her to.
There's an end date on this, too, right?
It cannot be longer than six months, based on the FRS rules, to it being temporary. So.
April 16.
But I don't foresee it coming that far, to be honest. And I'm sure she doesn't want it to.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor? Oppose? Item number 10, the town council to accept the resignation of Wendy Prather from the Planning and Zoning Board, effective October 15, 2025. Hold on one second. Yeah, did you want to speak on the resignation or the hiring?
The hiring.
Okay, because you've got number 10. You've got number 10, which is this item, the resignation.
It's okay. There you go.
All right.
Motion to accept.
No, he wants to.
He wants to speak on the next one.
That was a mistake, is the, okay. I thought there was a different mistake. Sorry. Yeah, motion to accept resignation. Second.
I just want to say, we're already advertising for a zoning position, because as you know, at the end of every year, we have at least one person, usually two, that rotate off. We already have that advertisement out, and we're receiving resumes. So when you guys review and potentially interview for those resumes at your November meeting, it will be to choose two people. One of those will have to start before December 15th to meet our 60 days. Somebody comes off, you have to appoint someone in 60 days. The second person will start in January and take Ms. Josetta's place, or Ms. Josetta, if you choose her again. But her term is the one that would be ending at the end of the year. I just wanted to make that plain. We're already, advertising was already out there before this came up.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Oppose? All right. Item number 11, town council approval of the town clerk's recommendation to hire Wendy Prather to fill the town hall administrative financial analyst vacant position. And we had a skip. You wanted to speak on that? Come up to the microphone.
Well, I just had a couple of questions.
Well, wait till you get to the microphone, name and address, so that people at home can hear you.
I'm sure they can.
Harold Frye, Jr., 37328, West 7th Street. Did they, did you make a decision on what
kind of salary you were giving her, and what that entails?
It's, yes.
Well, this is his three minutes. This is his three minutes.
That's all right. It's a question I need answered before I can go on, because it pertains to my other questions.
Yes, the same pay rate that the previous person in that position was being paid. There is a caveat to that, that we're entertaining, and that is the fact that she doesn't need health insurance benefit due to the fact that her husband's a military retiree.
Right.
And so she's asked to have the annual insurance amount added back to her salary. And so I've spoke to the attorney today in regards to an amendment, so that it would be consistent in our policy, that if we did that and outlay parameters, like you have to have insurance, if you opt out, you can't opt back in until it's open enrollment. Only a certain percentage of employees can participate, can not participate.
Have any other employees been offered that same?
Well, they will be. That's why I asked that it be put in a, in a.
That's basically all I wanted to know.
Thank you. All right. So now on the recommendation to hire Wendy. Do we have a motion and a second for discussion?
I'll make the motion, recommend to hire Wendy, rather than fill the vacant administrative financial assistant.
I'll second that motion. For discussion, or? If somebody wants to discuss it. I'll second it for discussion, if somebody wants to discuss it.
Make your own motion in a second. That's all you have.
All right. Lisa, if you'll call the rule on that, please.
Sorry. Councilman Bickett.
Yes.
Councilman Michaels.
Yes.
Councilman Wallace.
Yes.
Councilman Hunter.
Yes.
Council President Sims.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Item number 12, town council approval of the town clerk's recommendation to hire Heidi Erie to fill the town hall administrative assistant vacant position.
I went ahead. I do want to disclose that under emergency circumstances, she started today. And she is at the same rate of pay as what the position was vacated at prior to raises.
Yes.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor? Oppose? Item number 13, town council approval of the town clerk's recommendation to hire Teresa Fettig to fill the town hall administrative assistant vacant position.
I went ahead. I do want to disclose that under emergency circumstances, she started today. And she is at the same rate of pay as what the position was vacated at prior to raises.
Yes.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor? Oppose? Item number 13, town council approval of the town clerk's recommendation to hire Teresa Fettig to fill the town hall administrative assistant vacant position. Fettig, okay, Fettig.
And this position was same pay rate, and this position would start at on October 27th, because she had to give notice.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor? Oppose? Item number 14, the town.
Right there, the, and I know it's not, should have maybe added this, but when are we going to, we said that we were going to advertise for a deputy clerk.
That's what I just put on the website, and it's in the paper yesterday.
Okay, I hadn't seen that. Okay.
Yes, sorry.
No, sorry. Thank you.
I did accomplish that.
All right. Item 14, town council approval of the minutes for the September 23rd, 2025 workshop, October 2, 2025, regular meeting, October 6, 2025, special meeting, and October 9, 2025 workshop.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor? Oppose? Item 15, town council approval of AECOM Technical Services Incorporated, payable through September 26, 2025, project name, environmental assessment for the north and south property acquisitions at the Halyard Air Park in the amount of $1,650.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor? Oppose? Item 16, town council approval of AECOMs payable through September 30, 2025, project name, design and construct new box hanger at the Halyard Air Park in the amount of $8,915.28.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor? Oppose? How much longer we got on that one? Because that one's been on here for a while.
Which one?
The hanger.
Actually, the environmental assessment that you did first is almost complete, and it was on here first. This one has gone out to bid, and we've received bids. And so now it's a matter of putting that, doing the notice to proceed, then getting started.
Okay.
But we did have a low bidder, and.
Okay. Item 17, town council approval of Peters &amp; Yoffi Engineering, payable through September 30, 2025, project name, Design West 6th Street, in the amount of $31,564.90.
And this also is a developer-funded project.
Motion to approve with a clarification that that's Dave Springs.
Sorry. It is. It's the very first time it's been on there.
All those in favor? Oppose? Item 18, town council approval of PQH Group, payable through September 30, 2025, project name, Hurricane Shelter Community Center Project, in the amount of $18,750.
Motion to approve. Second with a question. Do we have any idea where they're at in the bid process?
It's on hold. I was waiting on the state, and the state has finally responded. Last week, last week, yes, last week, we got to regroup and look at interim funding before moving too much further, because the state has just, this past week, paid me from an invoice from that I submitted the 1st of July. And so the turnaround time, and I don't know what the problem is, because the lady that I spoke to replaced the previous person, and basically it just ensured me that everything would move smoothly forward, and unfortunately it hasn't. I think that she might have more to do than she can do. And so Brett is looking into that part of it. But all of the plans have been uploaded, so it's in the approval process of the state. And once they're finished, then we've already, our fire marshal and our building inspector's already reviewed them on our end. So it's waiting on state approval, and then I'll go out to bid.
So how far back did it push the opening? Because I know that they originally had a target date for either October or November of next year.
That's still.
They're still, okay.
It's, I think they know it takes a while to get through to the state.
Okay. We got a motion, second. All those in favor? Oppose? All right. Item number 19, the payable for CPH.
Formerly Mid-Tower.
Formerly Mid-Tower, in the amount of $4,480.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor? Oppose?
And this project also is out to bid right now, currently. And so we have a bid opening scheduled for, Corey, is it the bid opening on this for the manhole repair? I know it's coming up.
I think it's getting ready in the paper this year, next week.
No, it hit the paper already. No, it hit the paper already.
So month, advertising, so month and then opening of this.
All right. Well, that was it on the agenda. Do we have any comments on the public? Yes, state your name and address again.
Harold Fry Jr., 37328 West 7th Street. Well, I think Ms. Prather is a very qualified hire. I think you are opening up a huge can of worms, allowing this insurance to be added to the compensation package. It's going to, I truly believe you're going to be causing problems with employees that are here that weren't offered the same thing. And it's nothing against Wendy. She's helped me many, many times. I can't thank her enough for all she's done for me. I just think that you're opening up a huge can of worms, offering that insurance back as a compensation package if it wasn't done for everybody. That's all.
All right, do we have any other public input?
Haven't used these three minutes in a long time. Leanne Wallace, 37024 South Oak Street. I don't have a problem with you offering the insurance buyback as compensation. I would like to ask, when you rewrite the policy, that you consider making the town's open enrollment line up with most employers' open enrollment in the town's insurance year fall, January to December, instead of October 1 to September? And I'll explain why. If it had been offered to me when I signed up, I currently have private health insurance. The week after our open enrollment ended, my husband's opened at work and I could have signed up with him and taken the compensation and been added to his policy for cheaper than the stipend that you would be offering. But for me to take advantage of that next year, I will have to go out and buy a private policy to cover me for two months to ensure myself to be insured from October 1 to December 31 to now be added to his healthcare. Where if you're going to offer this as an option, it would be really nice if that.
What about anybody else's? What if their plan is runs in?
Most everybody that, this is the only place I've ever known of that it didn't end on December 31 and run with the calendar year. I may be wrong about that. But I just know from my house, I'm speaking from my house. That's the, this opportunity when I was hired was an opportunity for me to take advantage of it if I'd been hired a month later. Or if the calendar moves. Or if I find private health insurance for two months to cover the gap. So I'm just asking why you're thinking about changing that if it would be considered. Thank you for your time.
All right, anyone else? Seeing none? Mr. Hunter?
No, sir.
Mr. Wallace?
No, sir.
Mr. Michaels? Mr. Pickett? Council President Sims. You know, everybody else is Mr. Your council president, okay?
Pick up on that.
Well, I do have a few things. Next week, as we all know, is City Government Week. And I know that Alicia and Leanne has been working to get things done. I know Alicia has. And I know Leanne's been helping out, Lisa's been helping out when she can. But everything is, starts next week. Next Thursday, we're having muffins with the mayor from 8 to 10 o'clock. So if you want to come up and talk and speak and have a muffin with me, come on up here. That afternoon, at Southeastern Bank, they're doing a ribbon cutting for the remodel of their bank from 4 to 6. So just want to let everybody know that. If you can be there, I'm sure they would love to have you there next Thursday, the 23rd. You're going to be gone, I know. Yeah, the same day as the muffins with the mayor.
You're done.
Later that night on the 23rd is the mock council. And as I had stated earlier, thanking Ms. Atkins, they had a mock election for the fifth graders in each of their classes. And they chose all of the council members that are going to be up here. And then also, the third graders did their essays for If I Were a Mayor. And we're going to read the essays next Thursday night at 7:00. Award those winners. And then we're going to have the council and the mayor come up here and run a meeting. So if you can make it next Thursday, I would really appreciate it. Next Saturday, the 25th, we're having our first ever truck or treat event over here in Town Hall Park. And that's also going to be the food truck, instead of food truck Friday. It's going to be food truck Saturday with the truck or treat. On the 30th of October, and last year was the first year I went to one of them, but it was in Callahan. But there's a baseball game going to be in Hilliard next, the 30th. And all the players dress up in costumes. And they play basically banana ball rules. And they'll be running around the base that, you know, hitting the 30th.
It's a lot of fun.
Yeah, it was. And last year, I mean, you know, the kids with these blowups and they're up there hitting and trying to run the bases. It's hilarious. It's a good time. And then the following night on the 31st is Halloween. So be mindful of the kids out trick or treating. Make sure that you, you know, watch out for them. Because I know there's usually a pile of kids out running around. And I know that'll be the night that most of the churches have their trunk or treat events or fall festival events. So just be mindful of the kids on the 31st. And that's all I've got. Mr. Hobbs? Oh, you moved? Yeah, all right, you have nothing. Joe, have you talked to Gabe?
I haven't spoken with him today.
Okay. I know that they've got some, they've got gymnastics going on right now. The volleyball is in the middle of it. They just, or they start soccer.
Soccer tomorrow.
Yes, or this weekend. And then he's got sign-ups for basketball that'll start in January. So I know he's got some programs going. He's hopping.
Yeah, he's told me he may have to push the basketball sign-up back just a little bit to accommodate.
Okay. Ms. Purvis, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Counselor, did you have anything?
Motion to adjourn.
I didn't do one more thing, did I? I had enough. I didn't have to do one more thing. I put them all down. Are you going to be here next Thursday? Yeah, Amanda called us like, there's something about a mock meeting? And I'm like, yeah, that's the city government week.
It was cool last year.
It was, it was very, you weren't here, were you?
No, I wasn't here last year.
Yeah, it was, it was a, it was neat. And this year, the council was.